All right, this is a meeting of the Auburn School Committee, August 12th, 2020. I'd like to call this to order. I do not see any citizens to comment. So we will move on to special recognitions and for that I will turn it over to Dr. Hanfield.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good afternoon, everyone. It's with a very heavy heart today that we begin this meeting to honor the memory of longtime Auburn resident, Michelle Fuller. A preschool teacher here at Here We Grow for a long time and a fierce advocate for education within the town of Auburn. She passed away from cancer on Saturday afternoon. Within the school walls, she was always present. She worked on our Best Practices Grant Committee to secure funding for our preschool startup. She served on a number of PTO committees, arc at the Auburn Middle School, and most recently served with me during my time as high school principal on our site-based improvement council. She always had a smile, and she always had a Starbucks for me and her, and she always had great conversation and great questions, and she will certainly be missed. She leaves behind her husband, Chris, her two sons, Adam and Trevor, who she always talked about they were the light of her life. Many family and many, many dear friends. Her wake will be this evening at Britton Wallace here in Auburn from 4:00 to 7:00. And then their funeral ceremony service will be at North American Martyrs tomorrow at 10:00, and then it's a private burial for family after that. But very, very sad, and we'd just like to take a few minutes to pause here and recognize Michelle's loss. Thank you.
I would now extend a motion to accept the minutes of 8:05, 2020.
Make a motion to accept the minutes from our last meeting, 8:05, 2020?
Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
Roll call vote. Dr. McCrillis?
Yes.
Mrs. Harrington?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Holloway?
Yes.
And Mr. Scobie, yes, it is a vote. We now move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So as we've discussed in previous meetings, we're in the process, obviously, of creating a district reopening plan, which is now back before your first second read. This plan was required to be sent to DESI August 10th. However, late last Friday, the deadline was extended to August 14th. Since our August 5th meeting, we've added additional sections. We've also been revising as necessary. We've reviewed this second iteration with the Return to School Team, our administrators, the Auburn Education Association, and the Department of Health and Inspection Services. On behalf of the town's DPH, the plan, for the most part, was affirmed by Darling Coil. We're working out a few communication protocols between the nurses and DPH, and those could be worked out as of this call. Dr. Chamberlain's been working on that this morning. And we're also finalizing the metrics that would potentially cause a school and/or building, excuse me, a school and/or district closure based on, you know, increased spikes in COVID cases. In my report to you, literally, this news was breaking as I was getting these comments prepared. So attached is an email in your packets from Darling Coil to Dr. Chamberlain just regarding her thoughts, you know, on the plan as it presented. And then what I'd like to do now is for people at home. Can you see that screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. So yesterday, well, let me back this up. So two weeks ago, Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents sent a letter and requested a meeting with Governor Baker around the idea of metrics in terms of what would be some metrics that could be standardized across the state so that school districts weren't kind of, you know, going blind in terms of whether to advance in their reopening or to retreat in their reopening or to stay the same. Governor Baker was extremely amenable. As a matter of fact, he met with the Mass Association of School Superintendents on a Saturday afternoon and committed to the Superintendent's Association that, in fact, he would work with DPH to come up with some metric that would be sensible and that could be used as a guide to help districts make decisions relative to school openings or, like I said, school closures or staying, you know, somewhere in the middle. So as you can see on this color-coded chart, it's broken out in unshaded, which basically means fewer than five total cases, as it says there. Green, the average daily cases per 100,000 is less than four. Yellow, the average daily cases per 100,000 are between four and eight. And then red has average daily cases per 100,000 greater than eight. And then there's a corresponding chart over here on the side that basically would, that gives us DESI's designation or suggestion. It's not a mandate in terms of what you would do at the local level as it relates to operation of your schools. Yesterday, information, as Governor Baker was releasing this information, Auburn fell into the yellow category, and that caused a bit of a stir in the community with some, and I understand that. So myself and Town Manager Jacobson were fielding calls and emails around what that meant. So what it really means is just what it says. We have between four and eight per 100,000 on that metric. If we were in school, we would be aligned, we are perfectly aligned with a hybrid, or if there are extenuating circumstances, a remote shift to schooling for our kids. But it's important to understand that this is a 14-day rolling average, as it states here at the bottom, and that this data changes weekly. So I haven't, quite frankly, I just haven't had a chance yet to look at today's map of the state, but an updated map should have been out today. That could have Auburn in green, could have a still in yellow, I don't know, I have to go and look.
Chair, it should be up by 4:00 today.
Yeah, 4:00.
Yeah, it wasn't up before the meeting, I checked.
Great, okay, thank you. So by 4:00 today, we would have an updated map, and then it would, you know, very well, you know, show where we are, you know, here in this metric. So again, it's rolling, as it says at the bottom, it's 14-day, you know, 14-day rolling average and reported weekly by DPH on their dashboard that's accessible through the state website. So this is one metric that we will, you know, be using. What we're looking for here, obviously, would be trends in terms of cases presented. This isn't the only piece that we would be using, you know, to make a determination on school, but it would be an important piece, and it would be further discussion with our local Department of Public Health and certainly discussion with you as the school committee, who would make that decision in terms of what we would be doing, you know, relative to any alteration in school plans that were currently underway. So I felt it was important just to post this in this fashion. I do intend to send out a communication to families later this week, just kind of tying up a few different ends that are still out there relative to what people can expect as we start moving forward into August and September as we prepare for school to begin. But again, I just wanted to show that metric to the viewing audience so that they had some frame of reference. This came from the Commissioner himself, I'm not sure if he's posted it on DESI's website yet, but this was sent to us late last evening, so I felt it was good for fostering discussion around the topic. So I don't know if there's, I know there's probably some questions. Dr. Chamberlain, I'm not sure in your conversations today with DPH if you had any further insight into their thinking on this, or I know they were still unpacking it.
They are still working on it. Today's conversation with them, and I just, I cannot express how wonderful they've been to work with and insightful and thoughtful about our return to school. But today, I met with them along with our school nurses around some scenario-type questions, which we're going to continue to discuss so that our nurses all come back really prepared to face any eventuality that might come their way, but they are still looking at this. So we didn't quite get to that, but I'm going to be reaching out to them in the next couple of days. They wanted a couple of days to kind of look at it, and we'll discuss further that. They've been wonderful.
Excellent. Any comments or questions?
I only have, I have one comment.
Go ahead, Gail.
I believe the data for Auburn also includes our nursing home, which at one point was bringing the results quite a bit higher. Maybe they have it under control now, but I hope people keep in mind that that is part of our data, it isn't just...
Casey, your email's up on the screen now.
Yeah, I'm just trying to shut my, I'm just trying to shut my share off here, I apologize.
Chair, as of right now, the nursing home is under control. I haven't looked at the assisted living we live in that's in town, but there are, in the numbers for the last two weeks, there are a couple of cohorts or people who live together who have tested positive. So it's not like the numbers are all individual random throughout the town. There is some kind of continuity to it, so that's why even though, you know, it's something to definitely pay attention to and follow all the protocols, I would be more concerned if it was all very, all different people don't live together throughout the entire town, personally.
Thank you, that makes sense.
Any other comments, questions?
Gail, if I could just say that when the Commissioner presented this, because many towns are like us with a nursing home or assisted living in their town, he said that that should be considered in looking at these numbers. These numbers, as Meg said, don't reflect that at all, but should things dramatically change, we'll need to kind of know that, right? What, where the numbers are coming from, and the Board of Health will assist with that, so, good.
Any other comments or questions?
I thought it was a very thorough, very well-done document, and I appreciated all the links to ancillary documentation. I think we're probably quite far ahead of some of the other districts, so I really appreciate everyone's, you know, dogged devotion to getting this document pulled together and on time and working together, so thank you.
Yeah, through the chair, I mean, agreed. I mean, it's been, you know, it's been, you know, it's been quite a task to put this together. I have to, you know, give a special thank you to Dr. Chamberlain, who's been coordinating a lot of this with the principals. I've certainly, you know, put my two cents in there as well in areas, but Dr. Chamberlain has been working very, very diligently with our principals to pull this together. And also has to be a thank you to our Return to School Team as well. They have, they have looked at this, they have sent very thoughtful email comments and questions on behalf of the community back to us, and we've been able to work with them in a timely fashion to address those concerns. I suspect that will continue through, and this kind of leads into the revision of the proposed timeline that you see also in the superintendent's report, that we are leaving this document open for continued review and revision. The plan, you know, if accepted here for the purposes of Town Hall, the plan would be that we would submit this to DESI August 14. We would release this to our families townwide to let them know that this is the preliminary draft. I would let them know that we have, next week, August 17th, we're taking the Town Hall approach. We're kind of tweaking it a little bit. We're going to, on the week of the 17th, have a Town Meeting, Town Hall Meeting, recorded style, which, what does that mean? That means that we'll be asking families to send us questions ahead of time and that the principals are going to be doing building tours. If we, when we talked last, we talked about principals going through their buildings and showing people what it would be like to come to school for the first time and what they could expect. And so the principals within that tour would answer people's questions within their, as they get into those different parts of the buildings. Once that would be submitted out to families to watch, they would be invited to submit additional follow-up questions the week of the 24th. That would be a live Town Meeting with principals to answer those questions and for the community to ask any additional questions. We want to give the opportunity to the community to really look through this document. We want to also make sure that we're being very thoughtful in the terms of people's time. As we've looked around at other communities, Town Hall meetings that have taken place have gone in excess of six hours, where people are asking questions and it's comments and it's repetition, and so we just didn't feel, after looking at what some of our colleagues have gone through, that that really made the most sense. So we've devised this slightly altered kind of Town Hall Meeting approach. And then after the Town Hall meetings and questions from families and any refinement to the report, that would come as a result of the Town Hall Meetings, our continued discussions with AEA, our continued discussions with the Return to School Team, and certainly our continued discussions with you. We would look on August 26th to bring it forward for basically a final approval, understanding that moving forward, you know, there could be some slight alterations based on, you know, how COVID goes, so.
Well, through the chair, Casey, I think that sounds great. I think what might also be helpful would be to, I guess, similarly, you know, making the most of people's time during the call, maybe just having an FAQ site for Return to School just right up there on the district or each of the school pages, because, you know, some people will go through and read this whole thing and they'll watch all of the, you know, watch all the documentation, but others might just look for the, you know, quick and dirty birdie, like...
Yeah, so, no, that's a good point. I think one of the things that Dr. Chamberlain did that was really, was really excellent was that there is, when you look at this Return to School document, it's all hyperlinked. So if people want to hit the hyperlink, they can go to where they want to go to. There's also an executive summary site that will hit the nitty-gritty, you know, hit the real pertinent details, and if people want to go deeper, then they can, like you said, go through the whole document. But I also think too, to your point, you know, we were talking as an admin group earlier this week, the questions that are coming in from community, because we are answering questions on the daily from families, questions. We're starting to see those questions break off into very specific themes and ones that you might imagine, you know, like how's lunch going to be handled, or, you know, what happens, you know, if a child suspected of having, you know, COVID or illness or whatever, you know, what triggers a building closure, you know, is it the whole district or is it, things like that, those real kind of big, big things, you know, that families are really seemingly continually asking us over and over again. We would generate something like that and put it up, maybe even include it as an insert to this, you know, as well.
That might, and I, you know, I think that might just maybe give you one more layer, a bit of a buffer, because if you, you know, no need to answer the same question 100 times over, even though they are, you know, equally important for every parent that raises them. Anything that gives you guys back your time to work in every week, you know?
Sure.
And the detailed parts of it.
Yeah, no, those are, those are good points, and I, like I said, hey, we certainly will take that and we'll definitely do something with that, absolutely.
Any other comments or questions?
Through the chair, just reading about the COVID room, every school, do we have somebody who will be monitoring that? Are we, like, well-staffed for that and, like, nursing in the buildings, we're okay there too?
Those are some of the logistics we're still working on, because we really feel like, you know, the nurse needs to handle anyone with suspected COVID symptoms, right? The other ones that are going to be most familiar with bonding the PPE and handling all of that in the safest manner possible. What we're trying to figure out is how then do we monitor the nursing offices, right? Because now she's going to be in the isolation room, but we feel like for monitoring purposes only, I should say, monitoring, supervising that area, we will have people that will be able to do that. What we also hope in all of our conversations is that people don't send their child to school sick. And I think, yeah, if we can really get families to really embrace that, I think that all of these, I mean, our nurses are trying to deal with 100 scenarios that they keep running through their own head. Hopefully, it's not going to be that situation that often, because the child got up in the morning and didn't feel well and the parent kept him off our home. So that's going to be the key to this really working. But we are, you know, all the buildings now are working with their nurse to figure all that out. The isolation rooms have been identified, they're provisioned with what, we're getting provisioned with what they need, so we're well on our way with that.
They just know that there are, you know, they could have just one or two symptoms and have to be, you know, sent home for that and have to go into the COVID room, so, you know, if parents can, and I'm sure we'll definitely be pushing that during the Town Halls, but it's not, my kid has a runny nose and a cough, I'll send him to school, it's, you know, no big deal. I just, that's my big concern, yeah.
Jesse.
Oh, sorry. So just like a side comment, my kids heard about the isolation room. If you can include that in your video of what it looks like and how it's not terrifying, that would be good, because they are, they have a lot of anxiety over ending up in that room. I will not send them to school sick.
No, that's a good, that's a good point.
But if they're freaking out, there are other kids probably freaking out too.
Exactly, and so I was going to say, so that's the other side of this too, right? Is that we, we're preparing this plan, and so we're giving our families, you know, two weeks, you know, to kind of really go through it and review it, watch the videos, whatever, and really what we're hoping, and I will ask them, is that, talk about it with your kids, because your kids are going to have really good insightful questions like, yeah, I mean, I hadn't thought of that until you just said it, you know, what does an isolation room look like? Is it like a cave where the, you know, you pull the shade and you're done? Like, what does that mean? So I could totally appreciate how anxiety-provoking that could be, so that's a, that's a great, it's a great question, it's a great question.
I told her, like, you know, there'll be, there'll be like fluffy pillows, but now I'm thinking, no, it's COVID, so there probably won't be fluffy pillows, I don't know.
We don't want it to be known as the napping room or the, I need a break room.
I told her the most she'd be in there worst-case scenario was 30 minutes, so that's like the pickup time.
Also making sure that little, especially our younger kids, see what a person might look like in full PPE. You know, they're probably used to seeing people with masks now, but if these staff are in, you know, a face shield, a gown, a glove, that can be scary, especially if these kids are at school without their parents, so that might be something good to throw in that video too.
Definitely.
Probably good for all ages, quite frankly.
Great points. Any other comments or questions? I had one question regarding absences. I know that that is, that is part of the criteria to get into some schools, we'll say my school, for instance, that's part of the criteria, behavior, absences, grades, that type of thing for entrance. Now, how is that going to affect our students? Are we going to be able to, I know we have to report those absences to the state, but are those going to be counted as official absences when it comes to reporting to other schools?
Yeah, so that's a good question, George, and it's one that's come up a few, a few other times, you know, people concerned about, you know, attendance policy and, you know, what are the, if there are any ramifications of a punitive nature, right? If data goes in. So at the state level, although we're being asked to, to report data around attendance, there's also the message, you know, from, from the Commissioner around, you know, using good common sense, you know, as it relates to exercising attendance-related issues. So for example, one of the biggest concerns becomes, you know, there is a statutory obligation that children under the age of 16 are in school, and so that is what kind of prompted, you know, years ago in the district, the attendance letters that go out to families. And I know for a lot of families up and down PK to 12, you know, that can be very, very concerning, you know, that your child has been out X number of days, so on and so forth. In this particular case, for us, you know, we will continue to maintain that data. In terms of how does that impact us, the school district in terms of their, our federal education status, so our MCAS reporting data and things like that, what level we're at in a given year, our attendance is a portion of that equation, but they are looking at, you know, easing that requirement as it relates to holding a school district responsible for the attendance piece. On the local level, the other concern is for stubborn children that, you know, do not come to school or are not coming to school. The juvenile courts are open and will be working with school districts to try to facilitate students coming to school. Oh, excuse me, Elaine's iPad just went on. So from a school standpoint, as it relates to attendance, we would have to really just use common sense around the fact that, you know, it's not a normal school year, you know, if we're not seeing a child, you know, for a certain period of time, we would continue to follow up and do all of our, you know, all of our, you know, our work around making sure that our kids are attending school, but I think that we would, we would really be hard-pressed to put anything formal through to the court system and list their support unless it was just absolutely necessary. And that would be after, you know, school reaching out like we always do multiple times, Adjustment Counselors reaching out, sending our school resource officers to do wellness checks, you know, if we really just didn't have any other resort to get a family engaged in their child's education, then we would have to go to the court system, but from, you know, there's, there's nobody, I don't anticipate that being, you know, a big issue. Certainly, it could be an issue.
Yep. No, it sounds like, it sounds like you've given it some thought and it's pretty well-covered. Specifically, my concern would be someone, someone like, like my child, who takes a great deal of pride in their attendance and for many years was never absent, and that was because we sent him to school with a runny nose or a cough, and we certainly wouldn't do that at this point in time, but I wouldn't want that to have an effect on him or any other youngsters in our district who are trying to get into a Bay Path or, I guess, I guess the, I guess if you're going to a private school or St. John's or something like that, it's sometimes about the money, so I think they could probably forgive the absences, but, but schools where it is a little bit more competitive, that's my concern. I just want to, I don't know if we need a policy, but if we've got students who, if we look back and they've had great attendance over the years and all of the sudden, you know, they come up with a common cold a few times in one year and that attendance goes down, and they get beat out in a spot trying to get into another school because of those few days out of school and because they were trying to do the right thing, that's what I want to avoid.
Dr. Chamberlain, I saw your hand go up.
Well, I was just going to say, so, you know, it could be an instance where, you know, a student because of a family member has to quarantine for 14 days, right? Which means that they can't come to school for those days. I think what we can do is, and I would have to further check with our nurses, but they can document a lot of things in their, the nursing programming that they use, so, right, we can't hold that against the student. And actually, now I'm talking this through, the student would probably flip to learning remote if that were the case, so he or she wouldn't be considered absent. And I do think there was also a question at the Return to School Team that, if in that case, I just have a little runny nose, but you're like, I'm not going to send you, you know, is there an option, and I think we're building our assignments this way, that if the kids feel well enough, now obviously, sometimes they're not going to be, right, that they can do schoolwork, but if they chose to do some of the assignments and perhaps check in at the morning meeting, that they still wouldn't be marked absent, even if they weren't physically in school on a day that they were expected to be. Does that make sense?
It does, yep.
So that may mitigate some of what you're talking about, is kind of that backlash from being out, because if they're out for a 14-day quarantine, they can still participate in school, they can just do it remotely.
Yeah, I just see, I just see the concern being, some of the extreme cases, as Casey mentioned a minute ago, where you've got students with a history, you're going to need to decipher which, which ones are going to be given credit for attendance.
Right.
Through the chair, a follow-up question to that. Through the chair, a follow-up question to that specific, that is specific to what Dr. Richard Chamberlain just said. Are we, with regards to programming, are we actually looking at doing something like a live stream for kids that have actually still opted in for hybrid in the case that they are, do you have to quarantine for some reason?
Yeah, so we probably, we don't think we have the bandwidth for full live streaming, right? We've kind of talked about that several times, but I think we have to be a little bit flexible. So if that's the case, the parent's doing the right thing, keeping the child home, all the assignments for that day should be online. They should have some access to that, they could check in for a period of time, a short period of time. The teacher could kind of send them on their way, it would be a more independent day perhaps. Or they could still join any special or guidance or anything like that, and to me, they would be considered still in attendance, right?
Okay, so, but they wouldn't have the option to just kind of flip-flop into what the remote, the fully remote students are doing, because it sounds like the curriculum is slightly different. I'm just trying to.
I don't know if the, I don't think, I don't think the curriculum will be different, but the timing of things could be slightly different, right? So, so that's where that gets a little bit funny, right? To kind of mix those two groups in and out, just because what, what that remote teacher might be doing in the morning might be different from what. They might be a day behind or a day ahead or whatever that might be, so that might get tricky. But I do think that the hybrid teacher, right, who's now in the classroom and the students at home, can at least facilitate some of the learning or the activities that the student does for that particular day, hoping that that doesn't happen a lot. And if it does happen a lot, then it would be a shift to more remote, right, if a child really needed to be out for an extended period. Does that make sense? You know, you know, it doesn't look like, yeah, yeah, okay.
No, no, it does. I was just, I was thinking through in terms of how, in terms of what Casey had said before, in terms of how we need to be able to pivot immediately, I was, I think I had a different idea of, or I guess envisioned it differently in that if a kid just had to stay at home for one reason, either way, they could pick up that day and be like, oh, I can't go in Mrs. Berg's class today, but there's another science teacher that has their Zoom meeting today at one o'clock, so even though I'm not in Mrs. Berg's class, I'm gonna go to Mr. Whoever's. But that's fine, that's not it, it was more just me trying to get a better understanding.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Seeing none. I would entertain a motion.
I will, I will make the motion to permit the superintendent to release the initial Auburn Public Schools reopening and readiness guide to the school community, submit to DESI on August fourteenth and utilize the report in town hall meetings with students and families. It is understood the final document will come before the school committee on August twenty-sixth with any alterations for final approval.
Hold on a second.
Second.
Any discussion? I would just reiterate what Dr. Hanfield said and also what Ms. Kaufman said as far as our preparedness and all the work that people have put into this and, and, you know, thank you, Dr. Chamberlain, and, and thanks to everyone involved. The AEA, it's really impressive and it's, it's impressive that you have the answers and, and it's not something that you have to go research at this point, you put so much work into it that the answers are right there. For, for, for families, for parents, for the school committee, you guys are just so prepared and it's, it's, it's very impressive and I'm happy that we're, we're ahead of the game in relation to other districts, it's, it's much appreciated. Roll call vote. Dr. McCrillis? I think she said yes, Ms. Harrington?
Yes.
Ms. Kaufman?
Yes.
Ms. Holloway?
Yes.
And Mr. Scobie, yes, it is a vote, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Continuing on, just as a point of information, I had reported to you, I think a couple of weeks ago, July twenty-ninth, that on August sixth, we would be assembling a group of about thirty people consisting of parents, alumni, faculty and staff. And there was a couple of school committee folks that jumped in too, which was nice to see. To have a discussion around social justice in the Auburn Public Schools. And that conversation did happen, it went for almost two and a half hours, it was very informative. It was emotional and it really started to foster very deep discussion around, you know, how and why to confront social justice issues within the Auburn community and what the school's role in that is. So this was an outgrowth, I think, as I said in the July twenty-ninth meeting, of a lot of the activity that took place in early June with the death of George Floyd, Breonna Taylor and others. There was a lot of emotion from alumni at the high school level, there was a lot of emotion from community members. And from conversations that I had, from having attended both, both activities and protests at the library and at the police station, I felt it was necessary that we, we kind of have a conversation with everyone that was involved around that time. And so it was very informative, it, it was really more high school per se and alumni and, and community member discussion. But what we are now doing, and it says here, Lucas Villas Trachi, one of our students, class of twenty-one, said this work is going to be long, complex and at times emotional, but it is worth the commitment to the cause for our students and our community. And that's what we settled on at the conclusion of that meeting. So now what we will be doing is we will be starting to open that conversation with our administrative team. And then we will start to, start to put together a timeline or, or an order of events, rather, that makes sense. And so we will be putting together the minutes of that meeting and then sharing them out, I mean, they're very rudimentary minutes, but, and then sharing them out to the, to the group. That was around on the thirtieth and, you know, try to put together some, some ideas in, in terms of how we go forward, but it was a great first discussion, but again, it's gonna be long, it's gonna be a long undertaking. Lot of investment in time, but definitely something that I think is, is gonna benefit the Auburn community overall, so. I'll keep you apprised as we move forward on that.
Concerning, concerning that, I, I did receive a few emails along that same subject line, you know, what changes are gonna take place? What conversations are taking place? And, and my answer was that it is going to be a, a long process, but the conversations have begun. I would just ask everyone to just be patient, be patient, because it is gonna take a while. And, and I also reminded the, the few people that emailed me that, you know, we, we are in the middle of something very big right now. This is our first boat with, with a major pandemic, so, you know, nothing, nothing or nobody is taking a backseat on this. But we do have, you know, we do have a focus right now on, on something that's a little bit more urgent as far as timelines, you know, we, we, at this point, we have, we have about a month to go to make some things happen and get our kids at least back in school, you know, to some extent. So I just want people to understand that there, there is no backseat here. The conversations have begun, please just be patient with us.
Yes, and through the chair, I just would like to say too, you know, so we're looking at, I mean, this is when we talk about this, you know, social justice, you know, right now, you know, the Black Lives Matter movement, you know, the, the treatment of African Americans, you know, is, is certainly taking center stage for good reason. We in the public schools are also, and we talked about this at our August sixth meeting, we're really looking to broaden the discussion that yes, it's, it's race a hundred and ten percent, but we wanna look at all marginalized groups in our society, we wanna look at sexual orientation, we wanna look at gender, we wanna look at socioeconomic status and, 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 you know, and inconsistencies. And, and what are the types of things that we need to be discussing? How are we needing to be, to discuss those? What, what types of training and, 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 you know, programming, you know, is necessary for our, our teachers and our staff, and that is not to indict our teachers and staff in any way, shape or form. It's to inform them about the issues within which we're discussing, because I will tell you, and I was very open in my discussion, you know, in that meeting with everyone, you know, I'm questioning everything that I say and do around these issues because this has given me time to really reflect. And, you know, and, and, and I don't consider myself to be, you know, someone out there that's, that's doing things that are, are not correct or not appropriate or not kind. But there is still, there are still subtleties within all of these discussions that, you know, aren't necessarily my fault per se, but I have to be aware of them. And, and, and you have to be able to come to the conversation with the understanding that this is not about being defensive, it's not about blame, it's, it's about understanding. And it's about what do we do moving forward? And to your point, it's, it's very well taken, it is not gonna change like that. But we can start making some good headway on it, and that is going to be our intention over the next several years, to get some sort of an equity document created for the school district that, that focuses on all these issues. But to your point, COVID right now is dominating most of our time, so.
Great, great, great commentary.
I just wanted to commend the teachers who came and, and it really showed, especially at the high school level, the support that these teachers showed to their students, not just their students, but the alumni, there were quite a few teachers who came in had this strong relationship and wanna see the change happen. I thought that was great.
Excellent. Gail, did you have something? Just unmute yourself if you do. No? Okay. We will move on to new business.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chair. This is slightly, I don't wanna say dated, but we are trying to figure out what to do with it in terms of policy here in the town and across, you know, the schools as well. As we know, Governor Baker instituted a travel advisory August first to help keep the spread of COVID under control. There are some highlights below here that, that I placed into the superintendent's report. It's been posted on our school website and just for the people at home, effective August first, twenty twenty, Governor Baker has mandated that all visitors and returning residents into Massachusetts must follow new travel orders. Commonwealth has made great progress to slow the spread of COVID nineteen and gradually reopen the economy, and all visitors now have a responsibility to help us keep transmission levels as low as possible. And then he goes on to talk about, you know, the necessary steps that need to take place in terms of creating a travel form. Quarantining for fourteen days or producing a negative COVID nineteen test up to seventy-two hours after arrival in Massachusetts. And then that in fact, if the COVID test is not back within three days, people need to stay in quarantine until such time that they can be determined to be negative. And there is a failure to comply fine that municipalities may institute at the rate of five hundred dollars a day. I've been talking with town administrative, administration about this. Town manager Jacobson just came to a, a final policy on her side. I don't know what happened there, but we're back. Did everybody drop out for a minute?
Yeah, we couldn't hear you, Casey.
Yeah, no, no.
Went fro, it froze completely.
It just totally dropped and popped back up, so I know we're, we're clear for more than forty minutes on this meeting. That was my first thing, I was, ooh, maybe we're in that, but we're not, we're not, so. In any event, there's a draft of the document that, that town manager Jacobson had provided me earlier in the week around this issue, for you to just kind of review and get a feel for. And then I, I anticipate I would bring and there's Jesse again, all right, Meg, okay, so we're all coming back again. Looks like a Brady Bunch episode, all right. Can everybody, everyone can hear everybody, okay?
Yeah.
All right, I don't quite know what's going on here, but, so anyway, I'm not sure how much of that you heard, but long story short, I'll be looking forward to bringing a suggested policy around the travel ban forward next week.
All right. Thank you for that, and if there are no questions, we will move on to teaching and learning. Dr. Chamberlain?
Hi, everyone, thank you. So I will begin my conversation to say that some of the data that's in this document that I've shared with you is a little bit skewed, as we had a few families that answered multiple times to the survey. But basically it's on point. So you'll see that we have had a pretty good response rate, even though again, there are a few more we need to reach out to. And this is data that we're gonna be using to kind of begin to establish some classes. And as you can see that there was a much greater percent of students, of families who want their child to attend school in a hybrid model, all in the eighties or upper seventies percent of students in each school building. And a much smaller percent of students who want that remote learning model, but nonetheless, a significant number of students who will not be in, attending our school buildings each day. At the time I looked at this, it was about a hundred and fourteen students at the high school, seventy-one at the middle, a hundred and thirty-two at Swanson, forty-one students at Packard Chog and fifty-three at Bryn Mawr. The busing data didn't quite give us as much of the information as we wanted as of this point. There still seem to be a number of students where parents put in confidence that they just were not sure yet if they were going to be allowing their student to ride the bus. But nonetheless, it does seem that there are much, a much greater percentage of students who will not be riding the bus. So this is information we're trying to gather and use for a number of reasons, right? As I mentioned a moment ago, principals are beginning to look at, you know, how many students are they gonna have in the building at any one time and how is that staffing going to align, right? To staff who have indicated that they'll be returning to the school building versus some staff who really would rather not, you know, are unable to do the medical reasons and how are we going to marry those two groups of people? So that's one place where we're starting. We also have heard of late, some time ago, I think in our initial conversation, we talked about creating the cohorts and, and using the alphabet, right, so that siblings would be together. But it seems that there's a growing, a growing voice from the community who really are wanting that neighborhood grouping. In this survey where folks could put responses, a number of people have already indicated, you know, my daughter needs to be with this group and this group of students because we live in the same neighborhood and one of the moms in the neighborhood is gonna kind of provide childcare and supervision. So that's something that we're working on now to see where and what an appropriate kind of dividing line might be to create these more neighborhood cohorts. Because we still wanna make sure that we have balanced numbers, that cohort A and cohort B are about the same size or it defeats the purpose of how we've kind of established this learning model. So there's a little bit more digging into this work and these numbers that we have to do for sure. But we have had a good response, if people have not yet responded and you're listening, we urge you to please do that because we do need to hear from each and every family as far as what their decision is at this point in time. So it's a really good start, it gives us some good, you know, a good broad sense of where we're heading. But there's still much more work that needs to be done and more, more families that need to be contacted to really have a an exact, complete look at this data time of what we might be doing. So we're hearing loud and clear though, and I actually mentioned that to Darlene Coyle, and she said she had been hearing some of that through the community as well, hoping that we were considering more of a neighborhood grouping than a medical one. So we'll see if we can make that happen in a way that works.
Through the chair, I just have a question about busing in general, this might be a Cecilia question actually. In a normal year, how many, or what's the percentage of students that take the bus in general? Like, how, how do we compare? I can see what the survey says, but how far off is that from our normal numbers?
We usually have about sixteen hundred students overall that register to ride the bus for registration out of our whole district. So I'm not sure, like, I'm looking at the numbers, I don't have it in front of me right here, but.
About two-thirds of our, it's about two-thirds of our students.
Right, yeah.
But now if you look at the ones that have responded, we're maybe at three, five, you know, maybe we're around eight hundred right now. And again, that's not everyone responding, so there's a definite decrease as of this point with the number of students that it looks like will be taking the bus.
Okay, no, that's actually good, that seems like it, it, it would work out well given the new restrictions, so. You know, you know, people are worried about trying to get additional buses, but if we don't need them, then that's really great.
Right, right.
I mean, right now, and through the chair, right now, so we did, it says, but busing update underneath. update underneath the teaching and learning, but I ended up taking the the bus meeting today with with Cecilia. This was our first kind of reach out, you know, to AA to kind of get a feel for where they were with the new busing, you know, requirements and and things like that. So we were, I was very comfortable in terms of what their their sanitation procedures were. They're looking to have hand sanitizers on buses, obviously windows open as per D E guidance. They will be cleansing the buses between runs. They will be using static sprayers in the evenings to deep clean the buses every night. The drivers will be filling out a similar document as we'll be asking our our students to do, the the zip slip idea. And and so they'll be maintaining vigilance, you know, over the health of their drivers and making sure that those people on the buses, you know, are are as healthy as as they they can possibly be and should be. So they're monitoring that. And what we're doing right now, and and this is going to just require further updating in terms of meetings with them, is, you know, once we kind of get a handle on what we want to do, you know, if in fact, busing is, you know, by neighborhood, if we can make that work, then it requires just going back to to AA and exploring, you know, the feasibility of that with them. We talked about it a little bit today. They they had expressed just some logistical concerns about it, not that it can't be done, but, you know, so we we just, we just kind of let that settle with them so they could think about the possibility of what that might look like. But so it was a, it was a positive, you know, positive meeting with AA. And, you know, we'll continue to to dialogue with them through the month of August and September, you know, as we start to really close in on, you know, a school start.
Great, thank you.
Gail?
I have a question for Beth. I noticed that we have, let's say, 71 students at AMS that want to go remote. Do we have anything in place so if they change their mind, they can let us know ahead of time so they don't just show up someday and say, I'm here? Yeah, so we have spoken about that. It seems that, so there may be some changes prior to the start of the school year, right, to this data. Some people may go through the town halls and say, you know what, I feel good about the kids being in the hybrid model now. But then after that, we are going to have a system, kind of an application to change their mode of learning that will happen around the trimester switches so that will fit well with changes of schedule at the middle school or high school. And they're going to have to give us a little bit of notice because we still want to stand by the six feet distance with kids and all of that. And there may be some logistical things that need some time to take place. So we, there will be an application process for that. I mean, it's not, no one's going to be denied. We just need it for the for the warning and to be prepared for the child.
Good, thank you.
Yep.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none. And that's all you have for us, Dr. Chamberlain?
That's it. Dr. Hanfield gave you the busing update, so I am done.
All right, excellent. I thank you both, great reports. And now for a little pick me up, we move on to business and financial. Celia?
Good afternoon, everyone. I have a very short report. I provided in your packet a unitary budget report for fiscal year '21 dated August 7, 2020, and I'm happy to answer any questions with regard to that. At this time, I didn't have any specific transfers, so it's just the budget, unitary budget report. And if you have any questions or anything?
Any questions or comments? Gail?
I'm sorry, Dot.
No, go ahead.
Cecilia, I just have one. It looks like we have enough money. Are we going to be able to start paying the teachers' salaries when they start working? Or how's that going to happen?
Yeah, yes. I mean, we haven't, basically, they're on a 26 pace cycle, so they have, they pay through the summer. We will be, we just did our last summer payroll or for the summer liability. So the next payroll that will start the teachers, the IAs, the nurses, and the ABAs, they will be put into the budget and we will be running numbers. So right now, the numbers aren't encumbered for their salaries, but they will be within the next payroll period. Liz will be working on getting them all. She has them all entered and just ready to set them up and push go to to get them to encumber, but their salaries will be encumbered. So we do have enough money to cover the salaries for the current staff that we have in place, so.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
And through the chair, but just to follow up on that real quick. So we're still awaiting final numbers from the state, you know, but to Cecilia's point, yeah, I mean, we're we're fine in that respect. What we're really waiting is to get a firm handle on what the numbers are, you know, from the state or at least some strong projections. And then we have to sit down and with the unions and start looking at those MOAs that we had drafted back in the spring. I have a meeting with town manager Jacobson and CFO Kason Orbitz on Monday, and that'll be, that's one of the topics of discussion. But we're okay.
Dot, did you have something?
Thanks, yes, through the chair. I just had a question specific to supplies. And obviously, that will probably be a little bit different this year for at least some of our buildings, maybe not for the little guys, but I was wondering when the teachers are actually going to be able to submit for any expenses that they may have or what kind of habits going to look different this year? Do you have any, and how that impacts the budget?
Yeah, so so basically, what what we did at the the start of the fiscal year is we we said to to building principals that we really wanted to hold off on any supply purchases unless they were absolutely, not that these aren't, but unless they were absolutely mission critical to, you know, starting the school year. So we've, some of those things have been ordered, but we did ask that they they leave about 30% of their their budget lines free in the event that, you know, we get a catastrophic budget number, you know, that it gives us a another avenue, you know, potentially to utilize in terms of closing the gap. But, you know, those orders have gone out for the the things that they've identified as mission critical to start the school year. Certainly, if there's a cost incurred, you know, by by any of our teachers for anything, I'm hoping that that would have been, as it should be, approved through the building principal, and then we would see those those returns here, and then we would be able to to get back any monies owed to to any teachers for anything.
Okay, great, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions or?
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I think that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you for that report. And we now move on to policies.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So somewhat quickly, I don't know how quickly, but last week I had brought forward suggested policy recommendation from Mass Association of Superintendents and Mass Association of School Committees relative to school committee understanding the unique nature of the times that we're in and that it just clearly delineating out what the superintendent may need to do with school committee consent. I indicated last week that I I didn't, I wasn't really feeling strongly about it one way or the other. It would be an interim policy, if anything, but as I read through the policy, and certainly, you know, the committee can can weigh in on this, but as I read the policy, there was nothing that jumped out at me that 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 would allow me to do anything different than what we're doing here as a group. So my feeling is, is that I'm not necessarily certain that it it needs to be, it needs to be adopted, but that certainly is, you know, up to the committee to discuss.
Any comments or questions? I I would just say that I could go either way. We certainly could adopt the policy, as you said, in the interim, and hopefully, when this is over in the near future, we could, we could scrap that policy. So that that's my opinion. Any other comments?
Through the chair, I actually just had one question, and I may have misread this in our return to school policy. I thought that we were actually also requiring face masks for our pre-K, like pre-K to two kids, and I only I only know because it's different than in this policy.
So through the chair, that's that's going to be, so that that'll be, that's a second policy that we'll take up after this one. And you're right.
Oh, did I miss that? Sorry.
No, that's okay. That, the face coverings policy is on first read today, so what we would be doing is taking that policy when we get to it, and we would be making those 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 adjustments because PK to one isn't mentioned there, but it needs to be based on what we're doing here in our in our district. But yeah, that's policy, but you're absolutely right.
Okay, thanks.
Sure.
So is this a policy that 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 we want to adopt?
I mean, there's no harm in adopting it. You know, there's no harm in adopting it. I guess when I look, when I look at it, I just, you know, it was crafted originally, I think the intent of it was crafted for, as I said last week, school districts where there was some friction between, you know, superintendent, school committee roles, who's making those decisions, things like that. I think that was the, that that definitely was the intent of this and, you know, for committees to to recognize that due to the nature of things that are going on at such a rapid clip, that superintendents have to be empowered, you know, to to make decisions on the fly outside the scope, perhaps, of of a school committee meeting or or a school committee vote of affirmation. I mean, like I said, there's no, there's no, you said, Mr. Chair, there is no issue with adopting it. I I just, I don't, I don't just, I personally don't feel that, you know, that's a circumstance that I'm living in right now with 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 you folks. But, you know, certainly, you know, we could adopt it, as you said, and scrap it later too. I mean, I could go either way with it.
Chair, I don't think we we need it, but my only thought is.
Can we leave you, George? We can't hear you, Meg, if you're talking.
I thought, can you hear me now?
George is back. He just started. It's that Bob started again, so George is back.
Do we, because we need to post our our school committee meetings, is it 48, 72 hours ahead of time? If there is a decision that has to be made that quickly, would this kind of cover us in that is my question?
If there was a decision that needed to be made that was of such urgency that I would require or I would want the committee's input, we would post for an emergency meeting. That would how we would, that's how we would we would handle it. This policy would, as it's written, would preclude that from having to happen, you know, based on the nature and severity of whatever the issue is. That's why I, you know, I I kind of feel like we're going to be talking, we would be talking about these things anyway, and it would be, you know, my recommendation to the committee, whatever, you know, just in in the face of being totally transparent with with committee but also with the public. So, you know, again, I leave it up to you. I can go either way, but.
Through the chair, I don't think we need it personally, but that's just.
Okay, are there any concerns with us dismissing this policy and moving on to the next policy? Seeing none? Okay, we will move on to the EBCFA face coverings on first reading.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So as as I said last week, I had told you that there would be a face covering policy coming forward. Are you out again? I apologize. Eileen was in, now she's out again. So while I'm letting her back in, I had let you know that last week we'd be bringing forward a face covering policy on suggestion from MASC. As as Dr. McCrillis had noted to me earlier and Ms. Kaufman had also noted, it is missing a few pieces relative to what we're expecting here in Auburn as it relates to face coverings for our kids in in PK in grades one. So I would say that overall, I feel the the policy is is fine, the way that it's written, but that we would want to make the amendment to include PK in one masks.
I would entertain that motion. I wouldn't say that more. Go ahead, Meg.
Face coverings as presented by the MSC, MASC with the amendment to require masks for pre-K kindergarten and grade one on first read.
Do I have a second? Any further discussion? Questions, comments? Roll call vote? Mrs. Holloway?
Yes.
Mrs. Harrington?
Yes.
Dr. McCrillis?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Yes.
And Mr. Scobie, yes, it is a vote. And is that all we have before we entertain a motion for executive session? Yes? Okay. I would entertain that motion for executive session.
I will make the motion to go to executive session per our Mass General Law, Chapter 30, Section 21A2, to conduct strategies for negotiations with union and non-union personnel, namely, staff leave requests due to the pandemic.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote? Mrs. Holloway?
Yes.
Mrs. Harrington?
Yes.
Dr. McCrillis?
Yes.
Mrs. Kaufman?
Yes.
And Mr. Scobie, yes, it is a vote. Good afternoon, everyone.